Let me have your attention, we'll call to order. The regular meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission for July 23rd. We'll have the call to order and a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, beginning with John DeVoe.
Here.
Jeff Watson. Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Paula Mattingly.
Here.
Jerry Penland.
Here.
Marty Probst.
Here.
And Charles Schrader. Steve Stannard.
Here.
We have a court.
We have a court.
Could you join me for a pledge of allegiance, please?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes of the previous meeting? Any additions, corrections, comments? Nope? Motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second? All those in favor? Request and/or public hearings. Potter Cup 15-003. Request for a conditional use permit by Douglas Potter and Candace Quist Potter, if I did that one right, in the Center Business District CBD Zone to allow for a change in use from commercial to residential to allow for one single-family residence on lots nine and 10, Block 30, Steph's subdivision, filing number two, 620 West Midland Ave.
Mr. Chairman, since I'm involved in this project, I will be recusing myself from this issue.
Yes, sir. Anybody have any objections to him leaving? Okay. Just make sure. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the Potter Conditional Use Permit number 15-003. It's located at 620 West Midland Ave. in Woodland Park, Colorado. It is lots nine and 10 of Block 30, Steph's subdivision, filing number two. It is two holdings, two specific lots. The lot area of both lots is 0.34 acres, roughly 14,810 square feet in size. It does contain one building, approximately 1,995 square feet. It's a single-story metal building, essentially a shell, that exists on the site and has existed on the site since the mid-'70s. It is located in the Central Business District, the CBD of the city of Woodland Park. It's currently a commercial use, although it is a vacant building at this time. It has been used in the past as a self-service laundry facility, and it has also been used in the past as an auto repair shop with a car wash. Today, we are here to discuss a proposed use to convert this existing structure from a commercial building to a single-family residential dwelling unit for one single-family pursuant to Section 1809, 090 N1 of the municipal code. This map shows you a general location of the site, showing you essentially the entire city, and the site itself is located in the central area just west of the major downtown portion of Woodland Park. It's pretty much just north of the intersection of Highway 24 and Highway 67. This map shows you a general aerial of this neighborhood, and what it shows you is that the site is located right here in blue with the building pretty much in the middle of this site. And in red, which is very difficult to read, you'll notice some of the surrounding adjacent properties and some of the surrounding adjacent uses. So for instance, immediately west is an existing single-family dwelling that is occupied as a rental property. Immediately to the north is another single-family residence, and to the northeast is another single-family residence. And immediately to the east is a single-family residence that is currently vacant at this time. Just to take note that there are two properties immediately north that appear vacant on this map but have in fact been constructed upon. They have not yet been occupied, but they are constructed as single-family residences and are intended to be rental properties. Those are the single-family adjacent properties, single-family residences adjacent to this property. What you'll also see adjacent to it is the Woodland Park Economic Development Office immediately west, for instance, the Pike's Peak Credit Union. To the south, immediately to the south, across Midland Ave. is Gold Hill North, and of course Gold Hill South across the highway over here, Urgent Care to the southwest, and then the Hackman House to the east. So those are some of the commercial uses that surround and about this property. Here is a map that shows the surrounding zoning. Again, the property is highlighted in red and is the pale blue, which is the CBD district. Immediately south, adjacent to the highway, is a public, semi-public land use, which is the Lyons Park area. Immediately to the north is this yellow zone district, which is urban residential. And surrounding is the PUD, which is Gold Hill South. So that is some of the surrounding area. This is a photograph taken just a couple of weeks ago. It shows the front elevation from the north, from the southeast corner looking northwest into the site. It shows you the front facade and the east facade of the existing building. So the car wash existed on this side, and the auto repair shop was on this side. And of course, the entire building was used as a laundry facility, which was the second use. This is looking from Quinn Alley directly south towards Pike's Peak, over the rear facade of the building and over the roof, looking towards Pike Peak. So that gives you an idea of what the building currently looks like now and the condition of the lot as we see it today. Attached with the site plan and the submitted materials by the applicant was the site plan, again showing you the location of the building, the existing layout of the parking and the asphalt area, and some of the landscaping that does exist on the site. No proposed changes at this time with this conditional use permit to the sighting of the building and the landscaping on the building. This is a floor plan of the existing building, and it just shows the room layout and the walls layout more than anything else. It shows the location for a small kitchen, it shows where a bedroom might go. This is a possible layout, and of course, subject to change once he does submit for his building permit application, which will be necessary for the change in use. So that is just a general floor plan, showing that the possibility of a single-family residence is indeed viable on this site and within this building. So staff did review the application submittal and looked for compliance with Section 1823, which is the CBD Zone District. When doing this analysis, we looked at things like what are the conditional uses that are typically permitted, and is this a conditional use that would be permitted and approved by this planning commission? And in fact, a single-family residence is an approvable conditional use in the CBD Zone District. We looked at height of buildings, the yard requirements, frontage, parking, fencing, signs, sidewalks, and landscaping, and found that the application as submitted without any substantive changes does comply with all of these limitations in the CBD Zone District. The application itself was referred out to various districts and agencies, including the city of Woodland Park. Utilities had a chance to look at it, Public Works, the Police Department, Economic Development, and the Building Department all looked at it and submitted comments. Any comments have been reflected in the conditions that you see that were attached with the recommended motion. We also referred it out to the Fire Protection District, to the Electrical Service Provider, IRYA, and to Black Hills, Baja Cable, C.DOT, Century Lake, and had no concerns from any of these agencies. Public notices, we did all the required public notices. Adjacent property owners within 150 feet of the perimeter of this property were notified of tonight's hearing. We did post two posters on the property, one at each entrance, one at the Midland Ave. entrance and one at the Quinn Alley entrance. And we did publish tonight's hearing in the Pike's Peak Courier. Staff did not receive any written comments or any concerns regarding this proposed change in use. We did an assessment, staff did an assessment of all of the conditional use permit standards for this change in use pursuant to Section 1857 040A of the municipal code. And in this section, there are 11 standards that we looked at. We looked at the need for this use, and there is a need for residential within the Business District of Woodland Park. And not only residential, but a variety of different types of residential-type uses and structures. We looked at whether or not there was any impact to public health and welfare, whether there was any impact to property values, and found that there were none. We looked at whether or not the proposed change in use would harmonize with the existing area, the land use in the neighborhood, and did find that it does harmonize as conditioned with some changes to the exterior of the facade. And I'll get into those conditions in the next slide. We looked at whether or not it complies with the city plan and found that it does comply with the city plan in terms of the provision of residential within the commercial area and within the city of Woodland Park. We looked at whether or not it complies with the regulations that are applicable for this type of use and for this type of change in use, and did find it to comply. We found no substantive traffic, drainage, water, sewer, waste, or other hazards related to this change in use from commercial to single-family residential. And we did look at architectural design. Looking at all of these 11 standards, staff did find substantial compliance with all of the standards and recommends conditional approval, and the conditions are as follows. There are essentially three conditions. The first condition is that the building itself and the grounds be altered to appear more residential in character and to conform and harmonize more with the surrounding residences, not so much the businesses. We're asking for new paint in a color that harmonizes with the surrounding residences. We're asking for two to three trees along the streetscape so that it's not, so that it's mitigated in terms of the visual impact. And we're asking that the dumpster be removed from the side of the, very visual side of the house, the structure. The second condition is that prior to occupancy, that the applicant and the property owner convert the services from residential, from commercial to residential so that it will be a residential water billing and it will be a residential fee for the electrical services. We're also asking for a building permit for the change in occupancy. We're also asking for a, a city middle of a park capital fee pursuant to our regulations, and asking for a backflow prevention inspection of the device that's already been installed. Since it's on two lots, we're also asking that the two lots be vacated because the building happens to straddle both lots, and we're asking for the consolidation of that, those two lots into one lot through an interior lot line vacation, which is expedited and a fairly simple process. We're asking for full cutoff lighting for all exterior lights, and we're asking that the applicant mow the property. And the third condition is that the property be maintained in a clean, orderly manner. So those are the, essentially, a summary of the three conditions. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman. Are there any questions from yourself or the rest of the planning commission?
Any questions?
Would you go back to the floor plan layout briefly? I think you mentioned that there was an area for a small kitchen?
There's a, they're showing on this floor plan, and they're not necessarily tied to this, but this is where all the plumbing is. They're showing this.
I see it now, okay.
Yeah, small sink and cabinets, which will need some upgrading.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? We get to ask you again later.
You may. There is a representative from the applicant here tonight. Her name is Rebecca Slaughter, and she is available to speak at the commission's discretion.
Who's going to make the presentation for them?
She'll speak.
Okay.
Okay, did you ask?
The architect?
That was Ken who recused himself.
But is he going to represent?
No, no, he's not allowed to speak to the planning commission.
Okay. Well, then, it would be the applicant's, applicants' time to come up and tell us about it, and we can ask you questions.
Hello. I'm not, are there questions? I'm not extremely informed on a whole lot of this, other than it has been used as commercial use for many years, failing laundromat, the need for residential, and to open up the property for additional use and options.
Questions?
It's a fantastic idea.
There's 2,000 square feet there.
Yes.
Roughly?
Just, just under.
Outside of two front fixed picture windows. There's no windows?
There are not.
None?
Just the two in the front.
So what do we do for ventilation?
Um...
So you got air conditioning?
That's a good question. There, there is not air conditioning. There were, there is ventilation because it was a laundromat. There are vents that accommodated the dryers, and so I imagine that those can probably be altered to allow for additional ventilation.
I don't see a utility room for washing and dry.
There are two bathrooms on-site right now. There is one that's more of a public use and one that it would be more of a private use. One of those may be able to be converted. I know that there aren't any set plans right now. I think that they needed to get the approvals first and then go through their architect to make it, you know, applicable to the property.
Bringing it up to current electrical code?
Yes.
I mean, all building codes, right?
All building.
All, all building codes will be addressed through the regional building department.
I don't see any closets in a bedroom?
There will need to be closets to make it a residential use, so that would be part of bringing it up to code.
Normally, we would, we wouldn't have a plan showing all that?
Not, no, because the conditional use is for the use only, not for the design of the floor plan. That's based upon the building code. You're the zoning aspect.
Lauren, this is conditional use?
Right, but what staff looks at really is whether or not it's feasible. And it is feasible to convert this to residential use. There's space for closets, there's space...
Well, you could build a garage and do that.
You could. It's feasible for residential use, and they will have to get a building permit to change the occupancy, which may require additional venting, windows, electrical...
Because surely, you've got to be able to open up a window if it's hot or...
Correct.
Whatever, for cross ventilation. It's 50 feet long, and all you've got is two doors. I don't know if there will be screen doors be put on there as well as commercial doors?
Correct. There will need to be a lot of alterations to make it feasible as a residential use property. But I think that they're in preparation and willing to make those alterations.
There's no point in their proceeding architecturally if they can't get the zoning made. So that's why they're...
Will they come back to us again to show us the finished product?
No, sir.
Who approves that?
That is done administratively through the...
You guys.
...regional building department and the zoning development.
Okay.
And there are three doors currently on the property. There are two in the back, one in the front. And there is ample space for laundry room, bathroom facilities, closets, mechanical area for hot water and furnaces and heat. And like you said, ventilation and windows. Because the structure is, a sound structure, I think it's pretty easily adaptable to what would need to be done to bring it to a residential code. But that would be an architectural situation later on.
You've got a lot of square footage.
Oh, yeah. Will this be intended for, as a rental property, or will you be planning on living in it or...
I'm not moving into it. No, I'm, I'm representing the Potters. And they, they don't intend to move into it. It will most likely become a rental property. But because of the, there have been layers of failing businesses in this particular structure, opening the ability for residential use, I think cleans up the property, and I think it cleans up the use, and I think it allows for something that's a little bit more appropriate to the area with, with the single-family dwellings that are around it.
Sally, is there a concern from a traffic standpoint if, I mean, one bedroom, I don't know if they would have children, but with all the traffic that's on Midland Ave., would that be a concern that we should look at with children?
Not at all. The residential use is usually much lighter in traffic, usually about 10 average daily trips for residential use than a commercial use. This has two access points, one off the alley as well as off of Midland.
So there is an entrance off the alley?
Yes. And there's good site visibility in both directions, so even though Midland Ave. is very busy, it's cut off to the intersection.
And if I might, I think part of the problem with the laundromat being there was that it didn't get enough street traffic to draw customers. And I do think it kind of cuts off before that point.
That was used as a cleaner, so one time, and a garage. Are we doing any Level 1 EPA ground, testing to make sure that our ground is good, like Woodland Station?
No, the city does not own this property, so therefore, it's not the city's risk.
We don't require it? Regional building doesn't require?
No.
It's been used there before?
No.
That's amazing. Because we ran into that on property across the street from the city property.
It is the owner's liability.
Okay. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Will there be any testing done to make sure that it's safe?
I think that between the architect and the owners, that there are probably some plans to make sure that structurally everything is good and that the ground is safe. They brought washing machines in a couple of years ago, new ones. And if you're familiar with the big triple-load machines, they're very, very heavy. And so I know that there had to be some level of testing before they could apply those machines to the flooring and the structure. And so, and it would have passed all of those because they did install them.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public period for comment. Anybody sign up?
No, sir.
Anybody, anybody want to get up, talk? Okay.
Hi, my wife and I own the cat just to the west, which is a rental property already. No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Well, then, close the public comment. Any final questions from us, from the commission, asking Sally or Laurie or anybody, anything? All good? Okay, then, I would encourage a motion. Any second.
I would make a motion to approve CPU 15-003 with the requirements, these stipulations.
We have a motion and a second. We need the question called.
Beginning with Chairman DeVoe.
Yes.
Paula Mattingly.
Yes.
Jerry Penland.
Yes.
Marty Probst.
Yes.
And Steve Stannard.
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll go get Mr. Hartsfield.
Thank you. Good luck with that.
Yes.
Great room for a basketball court. Chairman's report, I have none. Any reports or comments from, questions?
I do. I did talk to Sally a couple of weeks ago. You know, as you know, I'm at Walmart quite a bit. There's really a concern about Starbucks and the parking lot there. I don't know if any of you have been down there or been around. It is so bad that the employees are having to park on another vacant lot.
Boy, it's not a no.
Because of all the traffic and all the cars involved, I feel like the study that was done, the parking, the traffic study, it was totally out of line. And now that Verizon is in there, it's added more traffic. And the thought of them putting a restaurant or another business in there, I don't know where they're going to put the parking. And I did voice my concerns with Sally, that I felt like that traffic study was not adequately done. She indicated that they probably didn't realize that it's a meeting place. I mean, people come and they meet and they talk and they chat, but the parking, it's very dangerous. And I'm really surprised there haven't been numerous accidents coming in and out of that parking, plus trying to get in and out of there.
Have, have there been any accidents or...
I'm not aware of...
I'm not.
I think they've had a couple of fender benders, because plus, it's very narrow when you back up, like most new parking lots. There's not a lot of space for those big trucks. But, yeah, I don't know what the solution is, but I would, I can't imagine if another business goes in here, what it's going to be like.
So if another business goes in the same building?
Yeah, there's another space that originally, I think, was planned, they said for a, didn't they originally say like a little restaurant or deli or something?
Well, Starbucks was built on Lot 2, and Lot 2 was originally slated for a financial institution that would be a bank that would move traffic in and out fairly quickly. So expressing to Marty that the Starbucks has a little bit different behavior with their customers. People come and they stay for a while, socialize unless they're using the drive-through. And the drive-through seems to be working pretty well. So I'm not sure what their customer count is. It's probably pretty high, but the traffic does seem to flow pretty well. And then there's Lot 3, which is just to the north of the Starbucks site, and that lot is slated for a sit-down restaurant. Its access, however, would be off that little driveway that spurs off toward the Mobile Home Park.
Well, and that's where the employees are parking, are in that third lot, plus...
They are.
Now, the campers and trailers and travel trailers and motorhomes are now parking in that lot. I don't know if Walmart realizes what they're doing, but...
Well, and just within 100 feet of their front door with a trail behind the building, there is a parking lot that is hundreds of open spaces. So what we've been talking with the developer about is working with Walmart to create a pathway to connect the lower parking lot to the trail so that at a minimum, the employees could park in the lower lot.
So then, Marty, you were saying, so Verizon now with Starbucks is in there, and so people that go to Verizon are, they don't have a high, I don't think, customer, you know, count at one...
Quite a few cars on that side.
But they're going to sit and stay for a while if they're going to Verizon.
Employees that are in there.
And then they still have an open space if they, that they haven't decided what they're going to do with that yet?
You mean for Lot 3?
For Starbucks, no, Starbucks.
No, in that building, there's...
In the same building, there's open space?
That's right, there is another...
So they could potentially have more.
Yes, that's going to generate more traffic.
If it's a customer-based business.
Right. So it sounds like you're already working on a solution for that with Walmart and Starbucks.
Trying to work with Walmart and the developer to see if we can get at least their employees to park, not on the adjacent vacant lot, but down in the parking lot.
It's kind of difficult to walk across that entrance into Walmart. It gets really busy through there.
Yeah, it's a little dicey.
Yeah.
No worse than downtown, but...
No, it's not, yeah, worse than downtown, but there's a stop sign there.
I just was concerned because of the traffic study. I just didn't feel like, we didn't see the whole impact pictured.
Are they using all of the space to the north of that existing building? Is there a part, the parking there, we go right back?
Oh, yeah. And the drive-through.
Is that all being used by employees and that filling up? Okay.
You know, I haven't spoken with the man... You know, I haven't spoken with the manager personally. I believe the employees are parking on the vacant lot right now and trying to leave the paved lot open for customers, but.
They really shouldn't be doing.
It's a popular place.
Yep.
It is, it is.
There are no customers, I guess.
I just wanted to mention, though, the traffic report was done by the original traffic engineer, Mr. Rowe, forgot his first name, and, you know, he laid out the plan that that was all planned for those types of uses. A bank has lots and lots of trips, so he did not see that Starbucks and its commercial, other commercial uses were going to be any greater than what a financial institution was going to, that they had accounted for in the overall traffic plan. I think the behavior of the customers is a little bit different.
Yeah.
They're now adding, what, alcoholic beverages?
They got that.
Wine and beer.
Probably can't get them out there now at all.
Yeah, we'll never get them out of there.
Planning Directors' report.
I have none this evening, other than looking forward to the work session.
Okay. If that's the case, we'll continue down there in the work session. And.
Where, Jim?